Okay. Whenever you're ready.
Good evening. Welcome to the City of West Miami. Today is Wednesday, October 17th, and this is our regular commission meeting. Let's rise for the invocation.
Lord, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow upon us on a daily basis. We ask that you continue to bless us by guiding our elected officials to make the right decisions for our city, as well as our law enforcement and firefighters abroad. We particularly ask for blessings for those who were impacted by Hurricane Michael up in the Panhandle, particularly Mexico Beach, and we ask this in your name. Amen.
Deputy Chief, pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Be seated. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Roll call. Mayor Eduardo Mujinias is excused this evening. Vice Mayor Rondo Rodriguez is acting as mayor at present. Commissioner Candida Blanca?
Yes.
Commissioner Juan Blanes is excused this evening. Commissioner Luciano Suarez?
Present.
Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next on the agenda?
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for September 19th, 2018, regular city commission meeting.
Motion?
Second.
Are all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next, Madam Clerk.
Item five, report of the city manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I submitted a written report. One of the items that Mr. Blanes has asked to keep on the reports is the process with FEMA. From what we have been able to speak to, Mr. Randall, our paperwork is in review process, and it's nearing completion. So I would imagine within the next two or three weeks, we should have some results from them. Again, also Southwest 62nd Avenue, we should be finished with the replacement of all the street markers along 62nd Avenue by the middle of next week, and once completed, we will proceed to Southwest 16th Street. As I recommended the last time, the wood stump that, the tree stump that remains in front of the community center, I am actively looking for a sculpt, a sculpture person to go ahead and carve it into some type of art in public places. We're still in that process, but I submitted a couple of ideas at the last one, so if you all have a theme in mind, I would appreciate some input. This week, we submitted the FERDAP grant that you approved at the last September 19th meeting, September 17th meeting, I believe, and it was all delivered to the state of Florida, and we should hear sometime mid-year of next year whether we're funded or not by the state. Also, I'm requesting TY LIN to provide us proposals for design of drainage plans for the correction of two areas that consistently flooded after rain events. One of them will be Southwest 12th Street and 57th Avenue, just off 57th Avenue, and the second one being Southwest 13th Street, west of 65th Avenue. These two could be addressed by, with major drainage work to remove the standing water that stays there for several days. I've also asked TY LIN for bid documents and specifications for the addition to the city hall lobby for the passport office, which includes the reconstruction of the front lobby restrooms. In addition to that, I have requested proposals from a sign company for the redesign of our entrance monument signs, along with some additional signs for the new areas on decorative poles like Southwest 62nd Avenue where the right of ways are narrow, and once they submit those drawings, then I will submit them to you for input, and that's item on the reports.
Mr. Penn, I have a question on the FEMA. You said we should expect some results within two to three weeks. Does results mean money?
Results first come by obligation to the state, and then once they've obligated to the state, then the state sends us the paperwork for contract signage, and then once that's done, then the funds trickle in after that.
So possibly in two to three weeks, we will get paid?
Up to this point, there's been no other objections. We're dealing with the minor claims that, at this point, that we have, which is for the recreation center, the damage at Cooper Park, and some sidewalk damage that we had on some of the trees that fell over.
That is excellent news. Thank you for sitting on top of that. And on the wood carving, did you want to hear from us individually? Because you did present us with some ideas, so how do you want our input? Do you want to discuss it in the next meeting? Or should we just?
I guess when we have a full meeting, discuss to see what theme we go with.
So we'll bring it up at the next meeting?
Yes.
It doesn't need to be an agenda item, though, right? We can just bring it up in your report?
Correct.
Or discuss it at that point? Okay, perfect. Any questions on the manager's report?
No.
Okay, Madam? Madam Clerk, did we have any, and I failed, I should have asked that prior to the manager's report, do we have anything that we need to take out of order?
Madam Mayor, we have a public hearing advertised, Items A and 11A and B, that we recommend to take first, as it's been advertised at 7:30.
Okay. Then let's open the public hearing.
Item 11, 11A. This is a public hearing. Property address 5770 Southwest 9 Terrace, West Miami, Florida 33144. Special use permit for plant development, 2018-003. Property owner Luxor Residential Holdings LLC. Applicant requests a special use permit for plant development for the property at 5770 Southwest 9 Terrace, West Miami, Florida 33144. The property is zoned for our one single family, and the applicant is requesting to redevelop the property to allow a two-story house, zoning ordinance 282, section 2B41.
I'm going to open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Anyone to speak on the matter?
Madam Mayor, on October 9th, the planning and zoning board had a hearing on the same item, and during that hearing, no one spoke against the project. Basically, it's demolishing the existing structure on the property and fabricating a new two-story house with a two-car garage.
Advertised.
Advertised 500 radius feet, and advertised in the Miami Herald for neighbor section.
And do we have anyone here to speak on the public hearing?
No, Madam Mayor.
Public hearing closed.
Your name and address for the record, sir.
My name is Patrick Valant with Valant Architect. My office is 7480 Fairway Drive in Miami, Lake, Florida 33014. Architect of record.
Does anyone have any questions on this item?
What is the opinion of the zoning?
The zoning board recommended approval with the three recommendations that our office inputted, which was the impact resistant windows for first and second floors, impact doors for all openings, and the placement of cement tiles for the roof. To match the existing neighborhood.
Blending with the corredation process, too.
Yes.
Just as clarification, you did say the existing structure will be demolished.
Yes, completely.
Now, this is in stark contrast to the houses that are there. It's actually very nice. It's just, it's very, very nice. So there were no concerns to anyone about the difference in?
No one has requested to look at the plans or anything.
The contrast.
Is it a single-family?
Yes. It's similar to the one that we approved previously on 63rd and 16th.
So the windows, the roof, and the?
And the doors.
May I address that?
Yes.
Those items are addressed on the plans that were submitted. He just didn't know where to find them, but they are already on the plans.
Do you agree with the?
They've already been submitted. They're part of your package.
Yes.
Yeah, they're on the sheets. A cement tile roof, and the impact is already on there. We wouldn't do a house without that.
Motion?
I, Commissioner, one moment. This may not, I may not be reading something right here.
They are both in favor.
No, but just as a matter of clarification, never mind. It's a completely different item. I'm looking at the planning and zoning meeting, and there's more than one item on here, so I was thinking there was a confusion there. Okay, are there no other questions? Mr. Penn, do you have anything else to add?
No, you have to close the public hearing if there's nothing else.
Yeah, I already did.
So we should read the resolution for the record, Madam? Item 11B, resolution of the mayor and city commission of the City of West Miami approving specialist permit for plant development, number 2018-003, at 5770 Southwest 9 Terrace, West Miami, Florida 33144. The property is currently zoned for our one single family. The applicant is requesting to redevelop the parcel to allow a two-story house, and in lieu thereof, requiring certain terms and conditions pursuant to zoning ordinance 282, section 2B41. By mayor and city commission, we have a motion by Commissioner Suarez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blanca on the motion. Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote? Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Three, zero, item passes.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great design.
Madam Clerk, shall we go back to the order of the agenda?
At this time, we recommend following the order of the agenda, Madam Mayor.
Please proceed.
Yes, as part of the manager's report, my office is reporting in regards to the elections and early voting for the November 6, 2018, general elections, and the City of West Miami special election on proposed amendments to the charter of the City of West Miami scheduled for November 6, 2018. The notice of special election has been advertised twice on a newspaper of general circulation in English, Spanish, and Creole. Said notice also has been posted at the City of West Miami bulletin board, and the website, and at the recreation center. The office of the mayor has mailed a letter in English and Spanish to the residents of the City of West Miami, providing details of the special election and the importance to vote on these charter amendment questions. Early voting will commence on Monday, October 22nd, 2018, through Sunday, November 4th, 2018, at the West Miami Community Center. The voting proceeding for the City of West Miami special election on November 6, 2018, is the Open Bible Temple, Templo de la Biblia Abierta, located at 5720 Southwest 17th Street, West Miami. The November 6, 2018, special West Miami election will be conducted by the Miami-Dade County election officials with acceptance of the certification of the results by the West Miami City Commission. The polls will be open on election day from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Their important days, October 31st is the deadline to request an absentee ballot, and November 6 is election date. That concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Madam Clerk, I have a question. The letter from the mayor to the residents concerning our charter amendments?
Yes.
When is that going out?
Went out today.
Went out today?
Yes.
Thank you. And it is inclusive of what we have in our package, including the ballot?
Including the ballot. With the two charter amendment questions.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions for the clerk on that item? Okay.
No, for me.
Let's proceed.
Item six, report of the city attorney.
There's no report by the city attorney.
Item seven, reports of the city engineers, none this evening. Item eight, committee reports, report of the mayor.
I actually do have a committee report. Let me just pull up my pictures here for my, so I can be accurate. I am very happy to say that our after, our after-school tutoring program began yesterday, on the 16th. Very successful. We have over 50 children enrolled for tutoring. We have two tutors, and we are actually tutoring on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, and we have from kindergarten all the way up to sixth grade. So I am very, very impressed by that. I need to give a shout out and a huge thank you to John and his staff and the tutors. I didn't expect this much. So we started small, and I'm very happy to see that we are proceeding, and it's growing, and the parents are extremely grateful that our city is able to provide this to the children. And that is all I have.
Any other committee?
No.
Should I read this item, Madam Mayor?
Yes, next item, please.
Item nine, citizen presentations, no presentations. Item 10, under unfinished business. It's, item 10A, it's a follow-up report by the office of the acting city manager in reference to status of FEMA reimbursement process, which has been addressed already at the report of the city manager. So next item would be item 11C, which is, this is a first reading, phase two, which is the, is a first reading ordinance of the mayor and the city commission of the City of West Miami establishing a time limitation of blank days from the date building permits are issued by city officials for any building or structure for which permits are required by existing ordinances. Such permits shall lapse and be null and be void if work is not completed within set period, requiring that a new application for permit be required on lapsed permits, authorizing the city administration to establish a renewal procedure for expired permits, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date, mayor and city commission. Now discussion, this is the first reading.
I need a motion?
Yes.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, first reading.
But we don't have, how many days?
It's in blank.
No, no.
No, this is a first reading.
You have to make a motion to approve the first reading.
Right, so I need a motion?
Did you say reading, the first reading, right?
Yes.
Yes. No discussion, just, I need a motion.
There's discussion, I just agree with that.
That's a motion?
Is that a motion?
Okay, do I have a second?
The first reading, that's it. But how many days? It's in blank.
Not yet. We would have?
Candid, we're on, are you, we're on C.
I know. This is in blank. How many days?
This is the, may I?
Yes, absolutely, please, thank you.
This is the first reading. This is only for you to approve what it was read. And we will advertise it, and you will have an opportunity to discuss it, including the blank item.
Okay. Then I have a second.
At some subsequent point, and in the meantime, the ordinance is already in your package, so you can review it and make any corrections that you deem necessary and proper for the next meeting, which will be the second reading in which you can approve it.
Thank you for that clarification.
So all we need now is a motion to approve the?
I second.
We have a motion? Call the vote, please.
We have a second, Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote? Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Three, zero.
Next item?
Item passes on first reading. Item 11D, first reading, phase two. The second reading in public hearing for this ordinance will be advertised and will take place on November 7, 2018, at 7:30. Thank you, Mr. Acting Manager. Item 11D, this is a first reading, ordinance of the mayor and the city commission of the City of West Miami setting forth a time limitation for approved specialist permit for plant development, site plans that have not presented a building permit application for construction of a property within blank months of approval of our original site plan by the city commission, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date, mayor and city commission.
First reading, no discussion. I need a motion?
Yes. Second motion.
Call the vote.
Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote? Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Three, zero, item passes, and second reading in public hearing will be advertised and will take place on November 7, 2018, at 7:30. Madam Mayor, we, at this time, we are requesting to withdraw from the agenda Items 11A and E and F due to the fact that those, that they were not ready for mitigation.
Very well, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item?
Following item is 11G, resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an interlocal agreement and participate in the next cycle of reimbursements for the sole purpose of improving accessibility and equal opportunity to qualified persons who have disabilities in the City of West Miami, and conduct disability public awareness programs for the benefit of the community. Authorizing the city manager to seek reimbursements allocated by Miami-Dade County for said purpose, providing for an effective date, mayor and city commission.
Mr. Penn, could you explain that just a little bit?
We?
Plain or English?
Every year, we're refunded, the fines that are given to people that park in handicap spots without the proper permits. As part of that program, the fines that they collect revert back to the city, and it's for the city to use in improvement of handicap facilities or handicap accessibility, and we need a resolution in order to be able to receive those monies from Miami-Dade County.
So when the officer issues the citation, within our municipality, the money goes?
It's collected by the county and eventually reverts back to the city.
We get some of it back?
Yes.
Motion.
Second.
Call the vote.
Yes, Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote? Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Three, zero, item passes.
Next item?
Item 11H, request for resolution authorizing the acting city manager to spend $11,500 from equitable sharing funds to purchase software for FDLE computer system for West Miami Police Department. This request was by the chief of police and acting city manager. And I think the one was $11,000?
Yeah, but it was predeemed.
It was changed after that?
Yes.
Deputy Chief?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Acting Mayor.
Good evening.
Commissioner and Mr. Manager. This request unfortunately comes to you, and I'll give you a little bit of history. In 2014, when we went to USA Software, which is the computer system that, the software that runs the police department, department's computers, this other company, US, Summer Systems, Inc., they have a specialist that deals with police departments and police department computers. At that time, the first year, we paid for this contract for maintenance. Since then, we thought that we could maintain it on our own, and we did for the past three years, however, because of some laws that have changed with FDLE rules and CGIS and it's involving police checks and things of that nature, plus the years that have passed already, and the equipment is not working up to par. We have to unfortunately ask once again to bring an expert in to get us back to where we're supposed to be. The good news about this is that for three years, you know, we didn't use it, and we've been working without having to spend this every year, however, now we find ourselves in a position where we need to bring everything back. This company controls or helps us bring everything back to where it's supposed to be for the computers and the police cars, the computers at the station, the CAD system, the dispatch system, if you will, and we're having a lot of problems. So with these funds, we'll be able to bring the person back on board to assist us to get us back where we're supposed to be and pass inspection for FDLE.
Now, Deputy Chief, I, obviously, I know this wasn't budgeted because this came after the fact, so would you explain for my sake and for the sake of the residents that are listening, equitable shares? What does that mean, and where is this money coming from?
The funds are funds that are confiscated through, through our assistance to the federal government in drug cases, money laundering cases, and things of that nature, with one officer that we have detached to DEA. And basically, that's why it's called equitable sharing, because we take a piece for every case that our officer is involved, and we have a fund that is, those funds are strictly to be used for law enforcement purposes. This is a law enforcement purpose. It's for the department.
So this money comes in by way of your department from the work that they have done?
That is correct.
And then it goes right back?
Yes, this is no expense to the citizen whatsoever. This is basically bad guy's money that we're using for good reasons.
Well, I think our officers, technology changes daily, so our officers having the updated technology that they need is, it's a no-brainer.
And again, for the citizens, we saved them almost $50,000 in the last four years because our chief, who is a techie, as you all well know, and Mr. Q have done everything they possibly could until now to keep this running, but it's gotten to the point now where we need an expert to come in and get everything back up to par.
It's time. I have no other questions. Any questions?
I have a question. When we, by this system from FDLE, we equalizing our information with their information that help us, need more speed to solve the problems. This software?
In, in a nutshell, yes. Yes, and plus, it's a requirement by state law.
Well, good, but we are equalizing with their system, so we are, we are taking some advantage now from where we are now.
For lack of a better term, yes, exactly.
Thank you, thank you. Motion?
No need to read the resolution?
That's right.
They have to read the resolution?
Yes. Item 11I, this is a resolution of the mayor and city commission of the City of West Miami authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Summer Systems in the amount of $10,000. To renew a contract executed by and between the City of West Miami and Summer Systems in October 2014, to continue serving hardware and software of equipment installed in West Miami Police, Miami Police Department, police patrol automobiles from funds derived from Department of Justice Equitable Sharing, resulting from funds confiscated in joint drug investigations by mayor and city commission. Motion by Commissioner Suarez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blanca.
I have a question, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
You said $10,000 or $11,000?
If I may, I can explain.
Yes.
If I may, I can explain that.
Please, because I was going to ask the same question.
Originally, actually, it was a lot more than that, and then the, the request was for $11,500 because that's what the company wanted, but the chief was able to convince him to lower it down to 10, so we can get him back on board, and he was successful in doing that, so now it's $10,000 instead of $11,000.
So we're saving $1,500. Good.
$1,500 more.
I second.
Yes, and second by Commissioner Blanca. Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Three, zero, item passes.
Deputy Chief, I have a suggestion. Can you teach Mr. Penn how when you come ask for money, it's lower when you finally get in front of us? How you do that?
Actually, I got to give the credit to the chief. He's not here, unfortunately. He's the one that was able to do this.
Whomever, I like this. So you come before, it says one thing, you come before us, and it's much lower, so I happen to like that.
He's very good at negotiating.
Very good.
Next item, item 11J, resolution of the mayor and city commission of the City of West Miami authorizing the acting city manager to save a TPO grant in the amount of $40,000, providing for use of budgeted match from half sent penny tax 2018-19, approved budget for the purpose of conducting a citywide traffic study, providing for execution of interlocal agreement with TPO, providing for effective date, mayor and city commission.
Madam Mayor, this is the agreement that we must sign in order to receive the funds for the $40,000, exclusive only to the TPO and for the traffic study.
Mr. Penn, was that the, the full amount that we were looking for?
That was the full, up to the full amount that we were promised, and I guess we got funded for the $40,000.
And this has, does this have anything to do with that interlocal that we were questioning? We had some questions on before.
For traffic and jurisdiction, no.
Nothing.
We had to approve this. Yes.
The interlocal to receive the funds.
I make a motion?
Second.
On the motion, Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Three, zero, item passes. Next item, item 11K, discussion and request for approval of holiday schedule 2018 by acting city manager.
As customary, we come every year, and we request the holiday schedule, so you're aware. so you're aware what's going to take place and when it's going to take place. This year, the, starting in November, the turkeys by, distribution by the Mekasukis will be November 13th, Tuesday, November 13th. Wednesday, November 14th is the community center's Thanksgiving celebration. Wednesday, November 21st, a week later, will be the employee celebration of Thanksgiving. Thursday, November 22nd is the Thanksgiving holiday and the day after, which the city hall is closed. Garbage collection continues as normal. Wednesday, December 12th is the day that was set aside for the tree lighting ceremony at the recreation center. If you're all in agreement with it, we need to get that tonight in order to start planning the festivities. December 21st will be the employee Christmas lunch celebration. And then Monday, the 24th, we're asking for the city hall to be closed. And Christmas Day, the city hall is closed, and there is no garbage pickup on that holiday. Then the following Monday, December 31st, we're asking for city hall to be closed with regular garbage route. And Tuesday, January 1st, 2018, city hall will be closed, but regular garbage drought remains.
Okay, so Mr. Penna, which days do you need our approval?
We need your input for December 12th as the holiday celebration.
I think we had discussed that earlier.
December 12th, what is this?
Lighting of the tree.
I believe it's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday.
What celebration is it, 12th?
The Christmas celebration, the recreation center.
I don't get it.
The lighting of the tree.
The yearly lighting of the tree ceremony. It's a Wednesday.
I'm fine with that date.
I'm fine.
Yeah, for me, it's okay.
Okay. And then the 24th of December?
Fine with me.
And the 31st of December.
Fine with me also.
For the closing.
No, well, we need your blessing for that. In favor, you could all say aye.
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 Thank you.
And that's the last item, I believe.
Yes, item 12, good of the order.
Actually, I do, because I actually forgot to mention it in the, in my committee report. So if you indulge me just a moment. Speaking of, I met with Sylvania Heights this, this past week with the principal, as I do every year, and to the police department. They are extremely happy with the job that our officers are doing there. Spoke very highly, and the parents are obviously thrilled to see it. And Ms. Reyes even said, you know, how it lifted a weight off her shoulder, knowing that they're even for the teachers. It's one less thing she had to be 100% aware of because she, she knows we're there, and, and she feels very safe as well as the children and the parents. And the officers are out there, they're talking to the parents, talking to the children. So thank you, thank you, and the officers for a great job. Ms. Garcia, welcome. And also, along with the schools, I've been talking to Marilyn and the two schools, and we are trying to have the children from Summers and Sylvania come to the senior center to sing for our seniors on the day of their Thanksgiving celebration. The seniors love when the children come, and the children love to come. So I'm trying to put those two together and let them have a little performance while they're waiting for their lunch to be served. So I'm still working on that, and I'll get with you, Mr. Penna, on, on some of those details as soon as I confirm with the schools and with Marilyn. So that's it?
I just wanted to share with you a little tidbit that just caught my attention because of the holiday of December 25th. I learned about the City of West Miami officially as a lawyer a quarter of a century ago.
Wow.
When I saw Valerie Higgy Patton, then the mayor of the City of West Miami, that was very sorrowfully advising the community through television that the celebration of Christmas was not going to happen because there had been a lawsuit filed in federal court, and there was really no money to oppose it. I came to the City of West Miami and offered my services free of charge. I didn't even know the lady. And we went out before the, I believe it was the 24th, and we went out before federal court, and we were successful, and we were able to celebrate Christmas with our Christmas ornaments and lights.
That's a great story. Thank you for sharing, sir.
Very good.
Anything else, good of the order?
The bad thing, I was here then, too.
That was a quarter, was a quarter of a century ago?
Yes. Quarter of a century.
I was sitting right on the other side.
All in favor of adjourned the meeting? Are we in favor? Good night.
8:07.